Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty one. Meeting of the Long School Committee. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. School committee is using the Zoom meeting platform to conduct this meeting. LCTV is live streaming them on channel twelve, and a recording of the meeting will be posted to the LCTV YouTube channel as soon as possible after the meeting. Just reminder, a reminder that all votes while participating remotely must be made by roll call vote. Begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic, which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. First item is correspondence. Suzie, can you get that for us?
Sure. The following correspondence was recorded. An emailed letter from Dr. Mary Alice Abbott dated March eleventh, twenty twenty one regarding an article showing equivalent effectiveness with three and six-foot distancing in schools.
Thank you. Next item is a possible approval of minutes.
I move that the school committee approved the minutes for the March ninth, twenty twenty one school committee meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I could call for a vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Tiana?
Yes.
Tiana said yes, but she's not on TV, Diane. Um, Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. So Diane, I don't know if you want to count Tiana or not because she's not on the computer yet. She is in the room with us. What do you think? Okay, thank you. Next item for business is visitor comments. As always, if somebody is interested in speaking, raise your hand with the reaction emoji and let me know that you're interested in speaking. Seeing none. School committee announcements and recognitions. Members? Seeing none, we'll move on to our business with guests. Update on the instructional model.
All right, thank you. Uh, once again, we're here to provide the committee with an update on our, the work that we and progress we've made in introducing more in-person learning. And we were here last week and, and we sort of were dealing with some breaking news from the Department of Education. And so the committee was kind enough to schedule another meeting tonight to give us an opportunity to kind of dive into those plans and, and offer some plans and responses, the DESI guidance. So tonight is the administrative team. I thank them for gathering with us. They have been, they've been working hard over the last week or so to tear apart the guidance, to work with their staff, to think about how we can thoughtfully and safely implement the new guidance and how we can take our next steps in providing more in-person learning for the children of Long Meadow. So if you give me a second, I'll just share a screen here. So this is, I, I've regularly updated this timeline over the course of the last few meetings. And so you'll see at the, at the bottom of the timeline here that we've, we've added some important milestones. And specifically, we have in recent weeks been able to introduce in-person learning at grade five for our ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders. And we're also looking forward to introducing in-person learning four days a week for our grade six students, starting on March twenty second. So, so I'm, I'm really proud of these, this list of milestones. I'm proud of what we've achieved. I'm also proud of how we've achieved it. We've achieved it with, with safety at the forefront. We've achieved it with a high degree of partnership between the administrative team and the school committee and with our, with our staff and also with the community as well. I think that hopefully this conveys that we have, we've never sat still on our efforts to bring back more students for in-person learning. We have, you know, regularly evaluated what was possible and then, and thoughtfully brought back additional students over the course of the year. And so a pie chart that is familiar to the committee by now, I thought I'd display it once again to show that projecting out to March twenty second, we would have in eleven of thirteen grades, students in cohorts A and B would have the opportunity to attend for four days of in-person learning. So that, the orange slice of that pie chart has steadily grown. And, and again, we've, we've done it with a commitment to health and safety with a, with attention to providing appropriate PPE, providing, attending to the distance standards, self-certification, attention to ventilation, so many mitigation factors that we've, we've paid close attention to over the course of the year to allow this to happen thoughtfully and safely. And we've, we've gradually made progress in terms of providing students with additional in-person learning. Appreciate, you know, the committee's commitment to this process as well and its willingness to supply us with the equipment, the instructional technology, the PPE, and the staffing to make this happen. And so it has happened as, as a result of a tremendous amount of collaboration with, with, with the staff and with, with everyone's incredible amounts of flexibility and adaptability and creativity. So once again, I think, I think it's just worth starting the meeting with an acknowledgement of the, of the significant progress that we've made in this area. And yet, as in the past, we're, we're not standing still and we're prepared to take some important next steps. And so there are some additional factors that we, we have to think about as we consider next steps. And as I think most people are familiar now that the, on March fifth, the commissioner had granted or was given the authority by the Mass Board of Ed to determine what counted for structured learning time. Specifically, the commissioner was taking the position that remote and hybrid learning models essentially did not count towards the structured learning time requirements that, that have been in place. And specifically, an expectation was introduced that elementary schools would be expected to attend five days per week, effective Monday, April fifth, at an average of five hours per day of structured learning time. The middle level across the state would be expected to attend five days per week on beginning Wednesday, April twenty eighth, at an average of five and a half hours per day of structured learning time. There was no specific announcement made for the, for high school age students by the commissioner, but the commissioner has indicated that he was expecting to make an announcement about the high school in early April. The high school would also be bound by that five and a half hour per day requirement of structured learning time. And so that, that is something that, that we've had to pay close attention to and, and think about how we could thoughtfully respond to that. Certainly the other obligations to make sure that throughout this process that we're attending to our collective bargaining agreements, those that have been in place for years, and also any agreements that were specifically developed in response to the, to the pandemic and the, and the remote learning requirements. And then certainly, you'll, the committee is aware, community is aware that we developed very specific student and teacher schedules in response to the, the health and safety requirements that, that we understood back in the fall. And those, those schedules have been modified over the course of the year, but there are certain aspects of those schedules that kind of will continue to guide our work going forward. And then, of course, understanding that as, as optimistic as we all are and as much as we see the light at the end of this pandemic tunnel, it is important to remember that, you know, we are in still in the middle of a pandemic and that the health and safety requirements and guidance are largely still in place. They, they have evolved and we have responded accordingly. But it is important to remember that all the protocols, so many of the protocols that have been in place for the year or continue to be in place. There's, there's two sort of that, that jump out specifically. The Department of Education has been clear that lunch still needs to be served at a six-foot distance standard. We had some direct one-on-one conversations with members of the DESI senior staff, and they were emphatic about the, the requirement that students eat at a six-foot distance. And they did not expect that requirement to go away over the course of this year. And they were also emphatic that, you know, while, while schools are safe places to be as long as all the mitigation factors are in place, they were emphatic that lunch is an area that we need to be particularly mindful of and we need to be particularly attentive to the distancing requirements and the safety protocols. The, the commissioner's announcement, the authority that the, that the commissioner is exercising will require us to move towards that three-foot distance standard. And so we'll, we'll talk about that shortly. But that is the, the minimum standard that we will still need to observe. Some other factors that I just wanted to put out there now as part of the context of our discussion relates to classroom coverage and substitute availability. I had sent a notice out to families recently about the ongoing challenges that, that we face relative to classroom coverage. We are, to begin with, sort of stretched thin that, that it's sort of, we've taken an all-hands-on-deck approach to providing in-person learning this year. And we also know, it's, it's been said frequently that Long Meadow, like nearly every district in the country, is, is challenged to find substitute teachers. So covering classes when teachers do need to be out for various reasons continues to be a challenge. It will continue to be a challenge as we move towards June. And I just wanted to, again, kind of make sure that that was, that was part of our, known to the community and part of our discussions going forward. I think the, the, we have said, and frankly, the commissioner has said that we're anticipating a full in-person return next year. There, you know, certainly none of us has a crystal ball and oftentimes the pandemic decides things for us. But, you know, the, based on the, the path that we're on, we do anticipate that we will experience full in-person learning kind of under, under the ways that we're normally used to in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And, and again, that's a, that's a kind of a general characterization. Certainly that there, we, we need to understand the path of the, of the virus and we need to understand what health and safety requirements might be in place in the fall. So I'll take it as we have in the past, sort of, grade span by grade span. And our principals are here to fill in with any details that might be helpful to the committee. So currently, as you know, grades pre-K through five are experiencing four days of in-person learning. We have a number of students who are benefiting from four and a half days of in-person learning. These are students in, either in preschool or in the intensive needs or have specific intensive needs. And then we have across all three schools at all grades, pre-K to five, we have ninety-five students who are fully remote. So that's all grades, all schools combined. So you can see how that number has tracked over the, over the course of the year. That's, you know, we, we're, we're seeing more and more families signaling to us that they would like their children to come out of Cohort C and into in-person learning, particularly at the elementary level. So the, this, this current schedule that is, that, that we're, that we're currently experiencing would be in place until April second. However, in response to our own sort of internal interest in providing students with more in-person learning and in response to the new DESI requirements, we are looking at offering in-person learning, five days per week, beginning the week of April fifth. So, you know, and there are many districts right now that are scrambling to catch up to that new DESI requirement. I'm appreciative that we have made such progress at, at all levels, but particularly at the elementary level, that we are well-positioned to respond to this, this new DESI requirement to offer five days a week of in-person learning at the elementary level. What we do need to be attentive to, however, is the, is the Wednesday schedule. So currently, as everyone knows, we are remote. What, what we are offering tonight is that we would have in-person learning on Wednesdays up until one forty-five, at which point we would propose an early release of our students so as to allow for the common planning time. Wednesday afternoons right now are set aside for common planning time for our staff. And really, it has been, that time has been a lifeline for our staff. And there's a few bullets here that sort of explain how valuable that time has become, particularly at the elementary level, where we've hired so many new teachers and we've reassigned so many folks from, from the roles that they were in last year that, that collaborative time has, has become critically important. And we have Cohort C teachers who need that opportunity to stay connected to their in-person colleagues as well. I hear from our administrators that, that, that common time is critical as a time for them to touch base with staff or for the staff to have their questions answered as well. And then finally, it is potentially time where, you know, where it's been used this year is we've been able to use that time to schedule 504 and IEP meetings in some cases so as to limit the amount of time that we need to pull teachers from regular direct instruction. So the proposal at the elementary level then is to begin offering five days of in-person learning, beginning the week of April fifth. And Wednesdays beginning April seventh, we would release the students about an hour and five minutes early. I think it is at one forty-five. Okay, so maybe if you'd like, would you rather I go through the entire deck and then come back to questions individually? Or would you like to sort of pause at each level? What would be, you have a preference at all?
Questions now or wait till the end?
Okay.
It's a good time, smarty.
All right, we'll keep going. So at the, at the middle level, as we, we have known for some times, this is not an announcement we've known for some time that at grade six, we had been planning well before any DESI announcement that we were interested in offering four days of in-person learning for students in grade six, beginning March twenty-second. We are on track for that. This is introducing in-person learning, more in-person learning ahead of the current DESI requirement relative to middle schools. This does involve, as you know, the, the sort of reassignment of grade six classrooms to repurpose spaces. And you'll see that we did have a number of grade six families that elected to return their children to in-person learning across the two schools, about twenty students opting to remain in Cohort C at grade six. So the next step then is to bring back students in grades seven and eight and for five days of in-person learning. And at this case, we think it would, is wise to follow the, the DESI phasing. The DESI recommendation makes sense for us if this is a requirement. And so beginning Monday, April twenty-six, actually a couple of days ahead of the DESI requirement, we would introduce five full days of in-person learning for students in grades seven and eight. As you know, we had asked grade seven and eight families what their intentions were if they, if we were to offer full in-person learning. And so you'll see that we had quite a few families select, elect to have their seventh or eighth grader return to in-person learning. About twenty students will remain in Cohort C at Williams and I think it's twenty, about forty-one remaining at Glenbrook. So as you know, the seven and eight implementation, there's, there are significant challenges and many considerations that are, are worth our discussion, worth our time tonight. Excuse me. First of all, we would be looking at needing to achieve the five and a half hours of structured learning time. That's five and a half hours per day on average. It's important to note that the grade six in-person learning plan, that those arrangements would have to be reconsidered when we add on grades seven and eight. And as this committee has discussed, returning students in grade seven at the middle school, even at three feet, is logistically very, very challenging. You've seen the numbers, you've seen our calculations in terms of the sections that would fit in. The approach that we need to take to make this happen is essentially to match classes with the most ideally sized instructional space. So that means that it might not be the most ideally suited instructional space, but it certainly would be the most ideally sized. Excuse me one second. Just got to go. I could just take a quick break. Excuse me. So this will require, again, a heavy lift by our administrative team and will require significant amount of hand scheduling. In other words, going through the master schedule and identifying sections that can't fit in the assigned classroom. It will likely result in the, in the dislocation of some of our CIA teachers, art, music, technology. And we have to do the final calculations and final room assignments and go through the schedule with a fine toothed comb. It could mean that we would be, still need to have some overflow classrooms if we have too many sections during a given period that are too large to fit in the spaces that might be available. And then lunch at six feet, and you'll, you'll hear me say some of these things when we get to the high school as well. We will need to continue to rely or will need to identify satellite spaces. For example, the, the auditorium at Glenbrook, the art room at Glenbrook. These are spaces that would have to be used to, for lunch. And one of the biggest issues that we're facing is seating. And sometimes these are some of the things that perhaps maybe aren't noticeable to folks at home when they think about the possibilities and prospects of bringing students back in. But we, the, the tables that we had previously used, you know, really, we couldn't maximize lunchroom seating earlier in the year. And so we pulled desks out of classrooms and, and brought the desks into the cafeteria so as to use the space efficiently to, so as to get more students in at the safe distances at lunchtime. Now those same desks will need to be brought back into classrooms to accommodate the number of students that will be coming back. And so, you know, we, we essentially need workspaces or lunch spaces for these, for these children. The, the tables simply won't work. It wouldn't allow us to effectively use the space that is available to us. So Mr. Maz has been working with the principals to identify, you know, their desk needs. And we have put an order out for additional desks. We're expecting those in four weeks, I think was the, the last projection that I heard. And additionally, the lunch at six feet, which again is a kind of a, is a non-negotiable standard for us. With the children being spread out over more spaces, we need to be even more mindful about custodial care and custodial coverage and lunchroom monitoring. Our, you know, we only have so many administrators. Our, you know, we only have so many administrators, administrators to monitor so many spaces and so many lunches and middle school children need to be watched at lunchtime. And so that is a, that's something that is, is a, you know, no small challenge for us. And then even moving the lunch lines more efficiently is, we're, we're in discussions right now with the food service staff and with the admin staff to understand how we can move the lunches more, more efficiently. And, you know, some of this we, we have to learn as we go. I think, you know, obviously, families, the community, they rely on us to, for some very basic things, and that is to take care of their children and feed them and send them back home. And, you know, that's, that's an important obligation and we need to do that safely and efficiently. And all the while, ensuring that, you know, we're able to maintain contact tracing requirements. And again, to reiterate, we are still in the middle of this pandemic. We're on the, on the downside apparently, but, you know, we have seen in recent weeks, even still, evidence of positive cases in our classrooms and we respond swiftly and we, and we isolate and we conduct the contact tracing. But the, the reality is more students at three feet will result in more, the greater chances that students or staff get sort of swept up in a, in a quarantine protocol. And that's something that, when that happens, it's, it's very disruptive to school, it's very disruptive to family life, and we just all need to understand that going in. You know, it's, it's, I, I, I think it's very important that we are clear with families that, you know, understanding that the trends, the health metrics are moving in the right direction, but we still need to be attentive to that. And so, you know, having an ability to handle that, respond to that, trace that is, is really, really important for us. And then at the high school, a, a quick rundown of, of where we currently are. Again, four days of in-person learning offered to all students in Cohorts A and B in grades nine through 12. Again, that, you know, we're, we're, we have made great progress at the high school and appreciation to Principal Anderson and his team and all his, all the staff for providing an opportunity for all of these students to experience more in-person learning going back to, going back to March 1st. And so we, you know, we know we have to respond to the new DESI expectations, we have to respond to evolving health and, health and safety guidance, but we've been making great progress there. And, and there are still students who are currently in a two-day option right now at the high school. And we talked last meeting about the overflow, the use of the overflow classrooms at the high school as a, as a strategy to allow more students back in while observing currently the six-foot standard. So the next step is on April 26th, that long-term high school students would have the opportunity for five days of in-person learning. And this is while achieving the required structured learning time designation, which again, five and a half hours a day on average for five days a week. So there is, we've tried to stay ahead of the, of the, sort of the DESI curve, and I think we've done that all year. We, we have charted our own path. And here again, with the high school, this is the, the course that we are choosing to take, that though there is no DESI requirement for high school, we would choose to begin to offer our high school students five days of in-person learning, beginning April 26th. So again, what does that look like and what are the challenges? Excuse me. So to begin with, we had surveyed Cohort C. These are the families that, that had been learning remotely during the third quarter and also into, in the fourth quarter. And 133 of the 346 students who are learning remotely have elected, signaled that they are interested in returning. It still leaves 213 opting to stay remote through the remainder of the year. So that is a, that is a, families can always, at the high school, they'll have the opportunity to move back to Cohort C, but at this point, families have made an election and they have made a decision that will carry them through the remainder of the year. So I think Principal Landers and his team were, were very explicit about that and they were diligent about giving families that sort of, that multiple opportunities to let us know if they wanted their child to come back for in-person learning during the fourth quarter. So what are some of the challenges and considerations? So on top of the students that have already come back, we're looking at the return of another 133 students that will have to be scheduled in. Assistant Principal Estradios and Dunkerly are masters at this and they're able to identify ways to integrate these students who are coming to us from Cohort C. The, one of the challenges that, that Principal Landers is, needs to, that we need to address with him is that we need to ensure teacher preparation time in a four-block day. So there, there might be circumstances where a teacher, if they happen to teach all four blocks, we need to figure out a way to ensure that they have proper preparation time over the course of the week. So that's a, that's a challenge for us that we need to, that we need to address. And then of course, again, what we are looking at, this will be done at a, at a three-foot distance standard. And this is a, you know, this is a different approach and, you know, we have had in place the six-foot standard. With this decision, we would move to a three-foot standard for our high school students. It would be in accordance with the approach that we're taking at the middle level. And so, again, the challenge of feeding hundreds and hundreds of teenagers at a six-foot distance in the middle of a school day. So that is something that is, is, you know, a very, very real challenge and it represents a significant bottleneck for us that we have to work through. We are, you know, continuing to be creative and adaptive with that, relying on, at the high school, satellite lunch spaces at, at all levels. We will continue to look at outdoor dining, intense to provide some relief. You know, the fact is you can't build your plans around outdoor dining. It's nice, but there are obviously inclement weather days where, you know, students have to eat indoors. Same problem as the middle school, well, all the desks that were previously deployed in the lunchroom will need to go back to classrooms. So we got to backfill those, we got to backfill that and make sure that we have desks for students to eat at in the lunchroom. Excuse me. And custodial care and coverage again, you know, more students over more space requiring, you know, more cleanup in, in a year where we need to be particularly attentive to wiping surfaces and, and preparing a safe spot for the next wave of students who are going to eat. So Mr. Maz has been working closely with the principals on that to, to, you know, work through that and make sure that we can kind of clean up the lunchrooms in preparation for the next wave. Same thing, efficient lunch lines and ensuring that we are observant of all the contact tracing requirements that are out there. And then again, same thing at the high school as, as at all levels is, you know, we, we remain concerned about the lack of available substitutes and, and the, the challenge that we will likely face when we're covering classrooms over the course of the next few weeks and months, particularly as staff find an opportunity to find, you know, their, their first and hopefully second shot with the vaccine. And we know that many, many people are experiencing adverse reactions to that second shot and aren't able to be with us in person. So that's a very real, it's a very real challenge that is on the horizon for us. And, and again, the quarantining requirements are, are still in place when we have to contact trace. So I'll stop there. We have some other backup slides that we could refer to if necessary, but I'll leave it there. And, and I know the team is here for you to answer any questions you might have and, and offer any clarity. So thanks so much.
Question. I can't see this Jamie, right? Cause I can see the four of you. So Jamie, if you have a question, let me know, okay? You're gonna have to either raise your hand on the little emoji thing or just unmute and tell me. Nicole, I saw your hand first.
Thank you. Thank you guys in advance for all of the energy that has gone into this, to all of our staff and faculty for the time I know they are putting in to meet these new demands. I'm curious about two things. The first is related to the high school. It looks like, if I'm reading the slide correctly, the two-day option at the high school will continue to be an option until April 26th, at which point all of the grades would then be in the full five-day model. Is that correct? Am I understanding you right?
That's, that's correct. Correct. Yes. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. My other question was about the early release Wednesdays. I'm curious if we are planning to do the early release Wednesday on, or for the middle and high school as well, or just at the K through five level?
We had explored that. The, the, the five and a half hour requirement at the middle and high school made that nearly, it made it impossible. You know, it, we, and so we really value that, that collaboration time. Like I said, it's been, it's been a lifesaver for us this year for our staff. But, you know, frankly, with the time requirements in place, we simply couldn't achieve it. I think we will, you know, we'll explore every opportunity to get staff the time they need to, to come together. This has been a particularly isolating year, I think, for many of our teachers. And so if we're able to repurpose faculty meeting time or, you know, eke out other opportunities, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. This is very helpful to understand all of the different challenges that you're facing for sure. And, you know, the, just the fact that, you know, you do have to have places for people to sit. That's, that's kind of a critical, critical piece there, especially at the middle school level. I, you know, one of the things that I think, and you said it before, Dr. O'Shea, that I think is important to remember is we've been on our own path. The state is coming in and putting some mandates in, but we've been on our own progressive path to return in person. And I, I, I think first of all, we need to commend everybody who's been involved in that, like you said. I guess my question really is around that. First, related to the elementary Wednesdays, and I don't want to seem, I don't want to seem at all ungrateful for the work that's been done. I, I, I'm very grateful and I know all of the families are very grateful for getting students back in. I'm just wondering why we would wait until April 5th for the Wednesdays, given that we were already on a path to working that out. And, and, you know, that seems to be the, the week that the state has mandated, but again, we're on our own trajectory. We didn't need the state to step in to move to more in-person learning. So can, can you speak to that a little bit?
Yes, certainly. I think it's a good question. I think we, you know, before, as you suggest, before the commissioner received the authority from the Board of Ed, we had begun conversations with our partners to, in the LEA to, you know, understand what our options would be for Wednesday learning. And so, you know, ironically, I think we, we might have landed on or around that same date, you know, potentially, but I think there's a couple of factors. So conceivably, you know, there's three Wednesdays between now and April 7th. We have tomorrow, the 24th and the 31st. So assuming tomorrow wouldn't be realistic, then we would look at the 24th and the 31st as, you know, times to start that earlier, start the new Wednesday schedule earlier. I think, you know, as it is, we are limiting or condensing the amount of collaborative time that is available to our elementary teachers. And I think I represent the opinion of our elementary administrators when they say that they wish it could be more than what we are, what we're proposing tonight. And so I think if we're able to keep the existing schedule on the 24th and the 31st, it will give our teachers some, some valuable time to get ready for the final push, get ready for the new schedule. As Mrs. Pratt said to me earlier, you know, the, the teachers are planning a couple of weeks out, so they probably already have the next couple of Wednesdays planned, I'd say. But it's, it's, it's a, the 24th and the 31st represent, you know, sort of big blocks of time where our teachers can kind of, kind of engage in that final big picture planning for the rest of the year and map out units of study, identify essential standards. The other, the other piece of it is that were we to start with the Wednesday schedule sooner, it would require us to hammer out an agreement as it's, you know, as we've said, that's sort of memorialized in agreements that we have for the 2021 school year. So we'd have to reach an agreement on that. I, I think, you know, realistically, even if we, it, we probably would have wound up looking at that April 7th date anyways as, as a potential date to modify the Wednesday schedule. I think families need some time perhaps to, to adjust. They, they might have some, there might be some new demands on families in terms of pick up and drop off. And then even our staff, I think it, it would be wise to give them some time as well to, you know, adjust to a new schedule, you know, both professionally and personally. They, they might live in communities where their children are going back on the 7th as well. So it kind of lines up that way. So I, I think there's a, a few different factors that would lead us to work with that, work with that DESI requirement. And if there's anything I missed, you know, any of the administrators, feel free to, feel free to chime in on that. I, I think it's a good question. I, I suspect that's on the minds of many community members, you know, is there, is there an opportunity to do it at an earlier date? So if any, if anybody else has any thoughts on that, feel free.
So I'll just add, going quickly, that some of our IEP meetings are already scheduled and so then we would be forced to find coverage that, as Superintendent O'Shea has said, coverage has not always been easy for us to do. So things have already been planned out a couple of weeks in advance.
Yeah, just a follow-up and thank you for that explanation. I think, you know, I, I hear everything that you're saying and I understand that. I think what I was wondering is there, is there really some, you know, very similar to like the middle school and, and the shift that, that, that we're looking for there? You know, there's a lot of logistical challenges and why you're delaying that. And I can see that. Where I'm not seeing, I, I understand there are meetings scheduled and things like that and, and plans that were, I, I just, it doesn't seem like the same logistical challenges are, are, are in play at the elementary school. And that's why I was wondering.
Yeah. I, I think that's fair. I think the, the logistical challenges right now are greater at the middle and high level for sure. With one of the logistical challenges, and again, these are, these are not comparable to what, you know, what we're looking at at the middle and high level, but one of the logistical challenges relates to staffing. And so we might have some staff who are less And so we might have some staff who are less than full-time and we need to evaluate whether or not we would need some additional time from that staff in order to cover us up to that 145 dismissal. So there's a, there's a couple of tweaks in there. And I know, you know, we're also still trying to pin down custodial coverage, which, you know, the kids are back now. But, you know, those are things that, there's still some operational things that are, that are still at play at the elementary level as well. But, but you're right, logistically, you know, the elementary principals worked through many logistical challenges, you know, earlier this year. So that's, that's, that's a fair way to characterize it, I'd say.
Thanks for all that Superintendent. I just wanted to ask a follow-up. As you mentioned, families are gonna need time to kind of prepare. And even though Wednesday early dismissal or early release is only an hour, only hour before regular dismissal, was there any talk or would you all maybe be thinking about kind of a a 1:45 to 3 o'clock room with one staff member staffing it for students who, whose families it might be a hardship for them to come and get them at 1:45?
We hadn't, hadn't been part of our discussions. We certainly could take that back as an admin team to look at that, to see how many families might need to access that. And then if we could cover it, you know, it probably wouldn't be with Unit A staff in an instructional way, but that's something that we could evaluate.
Thank you. I, I should have led with thank you again to everybody for this amazing work.
Yep. No, thank, thank you for all the work as well. I appreciate it. So the, the only thing I would say is I'm, I'm a proponent of getting any kids back anytime sooner for all the right reasons. So I get that there's a four or five date, and I get that obviously the commissioner is getting involved at a point in time. I think, I think Susie said it last week, getting involved at the kind of last minute here and dictating what we should be doing versus being a part of the process this whole year. So I, I think we should look at our district, make the right decision. If going back a week or two, if we pick up a Wednesday or two for the elementary students and that's the right decision, I think that's what we should be doing. Whether we have to negotiate with the LEA or not. I, I, I don't like this four or five date because I don't really want to follow what they're doing because I think they've had it wrong the entire year. So I'd rather be with us than with them who've had it been all, wrong all year and us who've been doing a pretty good job of progressing, but not being overly aggressive. I think somebody said that, that way before. So I, I just think we should look at it. I don't see the harm. It's my two cents on it.
Thanks Ryan. So it might be maybe Tom or Superintendent, either, either one or both maybe, or the, actually the elementary or the, the principals. But I was just thinking about the lunch challenges. And I know that in my school pre-pandemic, the lunch lines were already challenging to begin with. So I didn't know, and this might be a fire hazard, but if the, if the desks that we're getting Tom could be spaced out in the hallways, and then are the lunches hot and cold or just cold? Both, okay. Because I was thinking like, you know, like a, like a, like on an airplane, you have like the cart with the food. And if, if the kids were sitting at the desk spaced out in the hallway, then the food could be brought to them.
Yeah, I'm not sure that the fire department would allow us to put desks in the hallway.
Well, maybe some rules, you know, with the Corona, yeah. Alright, it was worth a shot.
After-school session, whoever's in charge of that will have to be able to maintain all the protocols. Might not be a heck of a lot of fun for those kids, but if it helps the parents out, maybe we do have to look at it.
Yeah, again, just speaking from my own experience, we always have kids that are waiting.
Are there any other questions, Nicole?
I'm wondering if you could reiterate for me again, when you were able to speak with the commissioner, is there talk that the contact tracing plans would be different? Or will the contact tracing standards still be six feet, even with students at three feet?
That didn't specifically come up in the conversation. Everything that I've seen suggests that it, that it will stay at a six-foot standard, the contact tracing standard. Now, I know the CDC is in the process of, you know, we hear, I've heard some reports that they might be revising some of their guidance relating to distancing. I have not heard that they would be revising anything relating to contact tracing. But, you know, I think probably my, my educated guess on that is as good as, as anyone's, I'd say. I think that's a, that's an important factor is, you know, as long as the, the tracing requirement extends to six feet, then that doesn't really match up with the three-foot distance standard.
You're good, Jamie?
Wait, you're just asking if there's any additional questions?
Yeah, I just flicked through the camera to find you, so.
Yeah, my only comment was just, I, I said we don't follow the, the state as my whole comment. That was the only one I had.
Thank you. Nicole?
I had one more question about lunch at the high school. I know that our upperclassmen have the option of having lunch off-campus for some of them. I'm just curious, is that something students sign up for and then are expected to do? Or is it just a daily, they can choose to go? What's the setup there?
So Nicole, so any, any 11th or 12th grader, their parents had to sign them up for that. And if they do that, they don't have to leave. I, I will level with you and be honest that with the challenges, we appreciate them leaving. We do have a seat for them, so they, they're not required to leave. It's a, it's a space on a, in a bleacher in the gymnasium. But they have been leaving and I'm, I'm thinking with the warmer weather, they'll continue that. Again, that only pertains to 11th and 12th graders, and that was only with written permission from, from the families. Most do do it. Most 11th, 12th, and 12th graders, thank God, do do it. So we can have some breathing room and at lunch. And so the lines, even though they've become larger and a little bit more challenging lately, as a, as a byproduct of the fact that it's good news that we have more students back, that hasn't been an issue from, up until recently because they've been, they've been accessing the open campus option.
Thank you. It sounds like that helps for planning purposes.
It does.
Suzie?
Thank you. Um, I think what I'm wondering now is, and maybe Marty, you could go on the middle school slide. I know that one of the things, you know, we've alluded to is seating and the fact that you've had to, we're in the process now of waiting for desks to arrive. Is that, is that the key logistical holdup for, for moving to that? Or like, so I guess my question is, I think every, I think it's clear, my, my whole orientation to this is how do we get more kids back sooner, right? Like I, whether it's three feet, six feet, whatever it is, I want to get kids back in person as soon as possible. So the question becomes, you know, if that's the logistical challenge, if, if the desks come in sooner, are, are we prepared to go? Or are there so many other pieces to that puzzle? Obviously, I know they're all listed here.
Yeah.
But what's the, what's like the tipping point?
I think, yeah, I think if desks were the only factor, we'd probably figure something out, bring in a, bring in a folding chair from home or something like that. I think, like any of these decisions, it usually relates to a multitude of factors. It is the need to reschedule the building. It's the need to find the desks. It's the, you know, it's the, the need to bring, honor our commitment to the sixth graders, bring them in on March 22nd. I'd hate to undo that plan to accelerate the other timeline. So there's, there's a lot of factors at play. And, and really, the, the pressure that Principal Allen and Principal Nelson have been under, even in the last week, to get us to this date. But at the same time, they're planning for the return of the sixth graders, and they're looking at how to reschedule their building in preparation for August 26th. It's just a reasonable date. Frankly, if the desk, if the desks arrive tomorrow, I think we would still say April 26th is a sensible date, yeah.
Thank you. I think, you know, I, I ask that more for, just to make certain that, you know, anybody watching or anybody concerned knows that, you know, it's not just one thing that's, you know, I, I could have, I guessed that, but at the same time, it helps to hear you address that. And I, I agree that, you know, the March 22nd return date for the sixth grade is really, you know, super important, especially because you were on that path already.
I appreciate the questions because I think the conversation here, the questions clarify our thinking. And the questions that the committee has are probably the questions that community members have as well, so.
Thanks Ryan. I had a question for Principal Landers. And Tom, I'm just wondering, I think I know the answer, but I, again, like Susie was saying, for the people watching, you know, I've got a senior at the high school who's remote still. And I, I didn't think to ask, like, if, if events start to happen and stuff, will seniors who are remote still be able to attend those events?
Absolutely. We're, we're, our cohort C students and our seniors in particular are gonna take part in our prom. If it is held, and we're hoping to, they're certainly going to be at our graduation. They would be at our senior social that we're, we're planning and we're working with, with Brian Shrebnik right now, in the planning stages of that, to have something nice outside where they get their yearbooks and they eat. And they, they see a, a senior video. So absolutely.
Great. Thank you, Tom.
Welcome.
Thank you. So I won't say any other questions. One thing, I'm gonna mute you already because I act with fear and I'm muted. Does everybody know? So, there we go. As a, as a principal currently working on bringing people back into school, I can appreciate what our principals have been doing since September. I've only recently had this to be part of my job. And to be honest, the idea of moving the right number of desks to be in the right places and then planning where and how you can make lunch happen, as well as getting a staff ready for what is every single time a dramatic change. I understand what you all are going through. So although it may be possible, and if you look at it and you find that it is possible, great, come back and tell us. Or frankly, just do it and tell us later if you can get kids in sooner. But I understand the need and the the usefulness of having it be maybe three weeks instead of two weeks, or two weeks instead of one week, because it can be a lot to do. So I appreciate all the work that the group has been doing for us all year and, including up to now. And if you can get the kids in sooner, by all means, let us know and do it because we'd appreciate it. But I completely understand if it's, if it's not possible, because I do understand the heavy lift that you all have been working on all year. So just wanted to maybe end with that comment. There are no more questions. We can move on to reports. Or Marty, do you have anything more? Or was that it?
That's it.
That's it. So reports, if no.
What's that?
Chair report. Again, I don't have one. Just another plea to again, help us end the pandemic in our town by doing your best to maintain social distance, wear your mask, wash your hands, do all those things. Get a shot, please. Student rep report. Maxim?
Hello. No, today I just wanted to touch on a few clubs, starting with the Climate Change Club. It's continuing to plan the Earth Day Town Cleanup in collaboration with town officials and members of the Town's Energy and Sustainability Committee. This event is planned for next month, April 11th, and they're encouraging students, including those part of Key Club and others to volunteer in other volunteering clubs to volunteer, as well as just residents around town. NHS, the National Honor Society at La Meadow, held their induction ceremony with no issues today in the auditorium after school. It went smoothly, lasting around 30 minutes, and everyone followed the necessary COVID-19 precautions to ensure safety among everyone present. There were some cohort C students present as well, which is a little bit unusual for the clubs. So that was interesting. The ceremony today was filmed and will be posted for people to watch on YouTube for those students who aren't cohort C and didn't come. And the next ceremony, induction ceremony will be taking place this Thursday, March 18th, for the cohort, cohort B kids. I guess an honorable mention I'd like to make is that a senior from LHS, Luke Norman, called into C-SPAN after President Biden's address last Thursday and was selected to be interviewed and talked a little bit about his past year here in La Meadow, where he expressed his thanks to the faculty, administration, staff, and school committee for the work in getting students like him back to school. The video clip can be found on the JCHR website, thejchr.com, as well as C-SPAN, if anybody would like to take a look. I happened to be watching C-SPAN at the time as well, and I would mention he represented our town and school very well, in comparison to some of the other callers especially. Also, the, the senior class is getting some help from local business, The Kitchen. Mr. Barquette of, from The Kitchen is selling these La Meadow styled sweatshirts. They have a graphic with La Meadow, the 413 area code and such, for $25, and giving the senior class some much-needed funds as a percentage of those proceeds. The senior class, given the pandemic, wasn't able to have our class play, which generally makes classes a lot of money for youth in prom and other end-of-the-year events, which we're still hoping to have, as was previously mentioned. So the senior class, and the part of the senior class, we encourage anyone in town interested in supporting the senior class to visit The Kitchen and preorder a sweatshirt. He's handling, Mr. Barquette's handling everything for us. That's, that's awesome. It's with a great design made by Mr. Barquette, and I'm very thankful for him for reaching out to help the class out. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Maxim. Brown?
Thank you, Maxim. I also just wanted to ask Maxim a question, if I could. I, I know he mentioned Mr. Landers went through the entire plan for the seniors and then the other students to come back at the high school. Maxim was super excited. So I was just wondering if he could just shed some light on how it's gone so far?
Planning for, for prom and end-of-the-year events, you're asking?
I was asking how so far, being back four days a week is.
Oh, being back four days. Personally, I, I really enjoy it. I've tried to attend school as much as possible when given the opportunity. I think a lot of students, I know who've, some students who were able to find a way back earlier or such, they enjoyed it. They say that, I know some people struggled with some mental health issues while they were out of school, and they say that they've, this, being back to school has helped them immensely. The sense of structure, the sense of like purpose, just from being at school. And I know personally, I need And I know personally, I need that structure. That's why I try to be at school as much as possible. And I, a lot of people have felt the same way. I don't know how students are feeling about five days back. People really enjoyed that half day on Wednesday, but I understand that the, the state has some more control on that, and that's likely why we're doing that. The five, as I understand, is probably five and a half hours a day. So I don't see how we could really change that, but I, I know that that's been unpopular when people were talking about that. But no, I think the students that have chosen to return very, enjoy it very much. Yeah, personally, I've enjoyed it very much, I think. I, I feel safe. I feel like there's a sense of purpose. Yeah.
Thank you for sharing.
Yeah, teachers also helps to have contact with the teachers.
Thanks, Maxim. Tiana?
Thanks, Ryan. I, I had a question for Maxim as well. Maxim, thanks for your leadership. You're, you know, you know, I think you're awesome. Maxim, are there other ways, like I love the sweatshirt idea, but are there other ways if people maybe have, you know, already have, you know, enough sweatshirts in their house if they can donate to the senior class?
We, we're, we're looking at a few ideas. Earlier this year, we had an idea for a senior smorgasbord, I can't really pronounce that, but where we were kind of partnering with some local businesses, including The Kitchen, Batch, which had a pop-up shop at the time, The Posto, Grapevine. We were partnering with all of, of those and seeing if we could do something where if you went first, where if a person went at a certain time and ordered, we would get some percentage of the profits during that time, so as a way to support local businesses and the senior class at the same time. That's something that we were looking at earlier in the year. We, I, we have not talked about extensively since then. Earlier in the year, we also, we had to obviously shut down both school and, I mean, everything turned to red back then, so we, we had to shut that down as well. But we're possibly looking at that again. In terms of donations, I don't know. I do know that we're going to start to be doing the senior class dues soon, but that's more for senior class parents. Yes.
Okay, great.
That's all I can say for now.
Thank you, Maxim. I just wasn't sure. Tom, is there like a, is there like a, you know, like a senior class, you know, account or something that people can just donate to?
There is a senior class account that if families or businesses wanted to donate money to support the activities for the group of students, they could do that. They could contact the high school main office.
Thank you. We're grilling Maxim tonight. Anybody else have any questions for him? You're going to let him go? Jamie, do you have a report from your other committee? Nope. And I don't see anything down for the subcommittees. Is that correct? Just that curriculum has a meeting coming up? So new business would be the school committee position on 2021 MCAS, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent.
Sure. Maybe, maybe Suzie can supplement my comments. The, so in your packet is a fairly lengthy statement for the Mass Association of School Committees, and it came at a time, I received it at a time after this committee had questioned, I think, the wisdom of conducting MCAS in a year when we're trying to find additional opportunities for in-person learning. MCAS will likely chew up a lot of that in-person learning. And so I think this was something that was especially of interest to Suzie, so.
Yeah, I was actually really pleased to see this letter. I think there were a number of points in it that certainly reflected, you know, my thoughts and, and I think the, the general consensus of, you know, across the country that standardized assessments really at this point. For the most part, and I think in Massachusetts, and I know, you know, in, in other states, it's a requirement that you have, you know, interim assessments that are aimed at, you know, getting a sense of, you know, students' growth over time, over the year, and identifying any learning challenges that students might be presenting or, or gaps that you can address through the RTI process. And we do that already. We have the eye-ready assessments, especially for our youngest learners. And I think that it would make sense that, you know, that data that, that is already generated, we've tested twice this year, you know, we have reliable, they're, they're reliable assessments that give us, you know, a good deal of information about where students are performing in reading and writing, reading and math. I think it just makes sense that, you know, that's, that's our, our measurement versus, I don't think MCAS is going to do us any good. The data that we get from it next year, right, really won't give us the, the on-the-ground data that we need now, which we're, we're generating when, now that we're getting students back. And the loss of learning time just is astonishing to me, that we would actually spend the time, you know, testing these kids throughout a week. Dr. O'Shea has indicated that because of, because of testing and we, we may have to send other students home remote on some of those days, which is totally antithetical to what the commissioner has already suggested. But I think the wisdom of our school districts should prevail here. And, and I'm, I'm definitely for, you know, supporting this position and all that's included in it. I think they've done a very thorough job of articulating what districts have been doing, can do, and, and exactly what we've been doing. And I think we need to take a stand on this issue.
I would 100% agree. I was also very impressed with the document, in particular what it said at the end that I think is a really critical statement. And I'm going to read it, because I think it was beautifully worded, and I don't think I can do it better. And, and I really feel like this stands for school, school superintendents, but also for all of the educators in the field, that we are the experts, the professionals in this area. We know best during this time how to measure learning loss and how to proceed out of this pandemic toward addressing student learning loss without the scale of disruption in-person state-mandated testing will cause. We should not be spending our time trying to operationalize test administration of students, which ultimately will only serve to be a perfunctory compliance task that is stealing our valuable time away from efforts toward a healthy return, recovery and acceleration of learning for all. And for us in our school districts, the return must start with vaccination of our educators. I think that that is beautifully worded to note the time away from learning that will be used for these tests, not even just the literal administration, but the planning, the coordination, the time that goes into all aspects of this. As we've said, we're talking about re-bringing our students back for five days a week at the end of April. We have a very small amount of time remaining in the school year, and we can do better at finding where those learning losses are. We can do better at figuring out what we need to do to better prepare students for next year, to make sure that we're minimizing the losses that have happened this year than losing time to perfunctory tasks like MCAS. So I, I 100% support this.
Thank you. Tiana? There we go.
All right. Thank you, Ryan. Yeah, and, and thank you, Suzie, and thank you, Nicole, for saying what you said. I am, I'm also grateful for the statement, but I do think the language around the mental health aspects of testing could have been a little bit stronger. So I don't know, like, if, if we draft something, I would just encourage that that really to be pulled out, because again, in my position, somebody who makes 504s for test anxiety for, you know, children who suffer with mental health related to that, to stress, low self-esteem, low self-confidence, you know, I also have to do social skills lessons about how to alleviate test anxiety, stress. I think it could have been, I think it could have been stronger, and I think it needs to be, for whatever that's worth.
Thank you. Just to be clear, you don't have a problem with the way this is written? You would just would have wanted to have more to it? I'm struggling.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying, Ryan. I, yeah, I, I'm, again, I'm grateful for the, for the whole statement, but I think, yeah, there could have been some more meat to that, that mental health stuff.
Thank you. Anybody else with a comment or a question? Yeah, Tiana, go ahead.
Sorry, Ryan. I, I really probably should have emphasized that I think it's, because first of all, it's my job, so I think it's super important that that aspect be highlighted, but also because the commissioner and everybody else who has been talking about getting kids back in school has been really saying it's in the best interest of their mental health, it's their social, emotional, like, and then, you know, they're not thinking about that when they're talking about the testing.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming. You and I are in the same boat, that we're going to be welcoming kids in the building for the first time and then arranging for test grades three to eight. Yeah, it's going to be fun. I don't know if there, there's no way for us to add to this, because it's a superintendent's letter, or do we take our own version? What is the protocol on that?
I would just suggest that, you know, we compose a very brief letter in support of it, and we can just simply, you know, but, but we'd like to, you know, add further emphasis to the, the fact that the, you know, the social, emotional needs of our children are, are not being met, you know, especially for those who have, you know, significant challenges with any sort of standardized assessments or, you know, any stress that comes along with that. We could, we could certainly emphasize that in, in any support letter, but that in general, the letter would just simply say, state our support and emphasize the social, emotional component of the stress of test making.
That would work for you, right, Tiana? Thank you. There's a motion for the schools.
I got it. I got it right here, actually. I move that the school committee authorize the chair on behalf of the school committee to issue a letter supporting the Mass Position on 2021 MCAS with emphasis on the social, emotional impact of testing.
Second. Second.
Discussion. Saying no, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Bronwyn? Nicole?
Yes.
Tiana? Hold on, I'll get you.
Yes.
Yes. And yes for me. That is six here. Next item is another possible motion.
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units A, B, C, D, E, F, H, and Purpose 7, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings, not to reconvene into open session.
Sarah, second?
Second.
Any discussion? So the motion is to meet an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units A, B, C, D, E, F, H, and Purpose 7, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings, not to reconvene into open session. And I'll call a real call vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Bronwyn? Nicole?
Yes.
Tiana? I got you.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. We are adjourned to executive session, and we are not returning. So thank you all for coming.